Godspeed to all, thank all of y'all for being here tonight. Appreciate your gracious co-living. I'd like to have our invocation done by County Attorney John Taylor.
Thank you, sir. If you please join me. My dear every father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that you've bestowed on us every day of our lives. We thank you for the county we live in, the country we live in, and for the freedoms we enjoy, which other people do not have privilege of enjoying. We most are most thankful that our privilege is to be able to communicate with you and to pray to you and to deliver our concerns to you and have you consider them. The prayer that you will be with us tonight as this mission goes through with various items on the issue and please guide them and give them good judgment in their things that they do for the county. We thank you for our nation and we pray that you bless it. And we pray that you will lead us and guide us in everything we do. Christ savior.
Now, all rise and have the pledge of allegiance led by our county manager Greg Wood.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the minutes from the regular session of January the 5th. We have a motion.
Group for group.
Motion. Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, simply by raising your hand. Motion carries. Here's the citizens. We have Scott Moy. Scott?
Scott Moy, 14126. I'm not going to do it. I know it's been a while since I've been up here, but I'll tell y'all why. Because here, back March 3rd, I got some notices down. Martha called me and told me that JCG showed, county manager sent her a letter. He was upset because of all negative publicity that they were getting from me being here speaking and whatever else. So she kept talking, "It'd be better if you could back off and keep it out of the paper. They might be willing to do something because they feel like they're in compliance. They don't have to do anything unless they want to." So I put, against my better judgment, I said, "I'll try it for a while and see what happens. On the condition that Martha, you let me know what's going on." And that's the only way I would do it. She said, "I'll keep you abreast of everything." For the first few months, she called and told me that she had done. They were working on the methane thing and a few odds and ends like that. And then they basically quit. I didn't hear from Martha anymore, so I just let it ride on. So I'm here tonight, Martha, to ask you how far you've gone in trying to solve these problems that I had with JCG.
I think Greg Woods just recently tried to contact them and haven't heard a response. So as far as the methane, last I knew, they're still waiting on the permits.
Okay, methane, that doesn't bother me. My problem is water runoff, noise, and smell.
Well, the methane is directed at the smell.
Somewhere.
No, that's...
It's not going to solve the smell problem. That's not all of it.
And I don't know that anything is 100%. But as far as runoff, we've had, as you know, the transportation has been out there and looked at it as a state highway. And anyone else knows something more, not accurate, but it was my understanding in meeting with Sam Wilber out there with Chairman Lang, that there's, they're the ones who have to approve and do any work to alter that runoff from the highway going north. And they don't feel that that is an appropriate area to do that.
Well, you've got to understand, Susan, you need situations. And you can't, the highway department shouldn't even be in.
Well, the county cannot go onto the highway and divert any waters or do any work on a state highway.
Well, I understand that, but the crews can't.
Not on the state highway right away.
They can do it on their property. That's always got to be done. This doesn't pertain to the highway. I mean, that's been like that forever. It's just they've gotten away with it. Since I own property now, I want something done about it. Because I don't know what's running through there. When it rains, I get everything under the sun. Beer cans, Coke bottles, bowling balls, you name it, I get it.
I do too, and I live out on Barnesmore Road. It's amazing the things that I get from all of this.
You've got to understand, if it don't rain for months, all that stuff, it builds up on that parking lot. All them trucks coming in, everything, all the trash that's all out there. It all flushes, just like a toilet, one time.
So the trash is starting to be a problem again?
Yes, it has. They throw it over the fence now.
Not let me know, so I have no idea of that.
Well, I was giving you time, Martha, to take this and see what you could do with it.
Well, I've given you every update that I had on it.
But I haven't heard from you in six months.
Any other update?
So when was the last time you talked to them?
It's probably been about that time.
And why haven't you...
What else did I need to ask you?
Well, they don't do anything about it. I mean, that's why you're my representative.
There's some conversations that I've had that I'm not able to discuss.
With them?
That I've had with them that I've known them not to make public as things that they're planning on doing, so I can't.
Scott, you know, we've talked to them. We've told them what the concerns were. Had them to consider it, but we can't make them do anything. And all we can do is just ask, which we've done. Greg tried to get in touch with them again this week to get an update on it and ask again. But I told you some time ago, we've done everything we could do.
Explain to me why there's nothing you can do.
Because of legal reasons. And Martha has told you DOT won't, it's something that they're not going to address. So we've made those, we've had them come out and look at it, and that's all that they've looked at. Said, "No, we can't do anything. We're not going to plug this up." We can't make Cook do anything because they're not breaking any regulations or rules. Are they causing some discomfort or something to you folks? Apparently, yes. But we can't make them change.
Okay. How do you know they're in compliance?
With what?
With anything.
We've had EBD down here. We've had water testing. We've done all the things that we can do that would uncover anything that was going wrong.
Well, when I asked you, Harry, I said, "How do you know they're in compliance?" One time I made you talk, you said, "Because they told me they weren't." I mean, that's not good enough.
At the time, that's what we had. But we've checked with EBD. The EBD has been down here.
I've checked with EBD, and they tell me, "No, they're not in compliance."
I think compliance is an issue too, that I don't think any one company is always 100% compliant. But they're, from what I've understood with conversations, the EBD has had different people here, is that they may have a problem at one point and they'll address it immediately whenever there is a problem. What on the record is, I've not looked at all of their records to see. There's not really any problem as such. We have had the water tested. Also numerous points on one occasion to try to see if there was a problem and if I found any violation of the rules.
Just ask at the right time, they'll find it.
Scott, if you've got some details and some things, that needs to go to Greg so that we can at least address it from that level.
I guess my whole point is tonight, I can see that it's not going to go any further with y'all. All I want you to tell me is y'all have taken it as far as you can go and you're not going to do anything else.
We've taken it as far as we can go, and I told you that some months ago. We've taken it as far as we can at this point in time. To say we're not going to do anything else, we'll continue to ask them to do, to address it or what's going on. But are we, can we do anything to make them do it? No, we cannot. So if that's what you mean by we're not going to do anything, noise is the right.
That's what I wanted to hear. But what will it take to bring this back up? It's like the trucks still come down C Street, D Street, J Street, whatever street they want to come down. I've seen loud trucks coming down there. You know, that should not even be an issue now.
It shouldn't be, but you know, the sheriff knows that they're not supposed to be there. And when, I know a couple of them have gotten hung up and the sheriff has issued citations. So that's all we can do. We can't sit there and have, you know, eight deputies sit there every day and look at it.
I understand that. I mean, but they could come through and do what they can.
They could. They could, and we certainly asked the sheriff that they would continue to check that period.
Well, that's the main thing I want to know. Just if y'all were done, that's fine.
We cannot do anything at this point other than just continue to talk to them and try and get them to do something.
But will y'all continue to do that? I mean, you know the problem's there and you know they're still there. They haven't changed. The noise is louder. Trash has become a problem again. But do I need to come back up here and bring this up?
Address it to Ms. Woods.
Ms. Woods, you going to help me take care of that stuff then?
Got to know, get a hold of them on the trash and the noise.
You said the noise has increased. What's changed?
I don't know.
What kind of noise?
Same noise, sometimes it's different. It sounded like it got the shredder going again. I don't know. I can't go up there. I would love to know what's all, but it has increased a certain time. This is a whole lot worse than it was.
Is it like when they're doing the cleaning or something?
It's at night when they're cleaning. It starts about 8:00 and run until 3:00 o'clock morning. So something's changed there. I don't know what it is. You know, everything's so secretive, you know.
Could it be leaves were off the trees and sound carries more?
No.
I mean, I'm not asking you the legitimate question.
It's pretty open through there, so that's not even an issue. But it has gotten worse, like I said. They pick up their trash when they get to it, but if, how many has been lately?
Well, they...
It all comes crossroads.
Some of us know the nature that we all deal with.
But they are the creator of the problem. That's, you know, I wish they would just sit here and say, "Okay, we can clean up 116 in front of the plant. That'd be nice." Then the dog, my neighbor's dog, be dragging all down there in front yard and it blows over in my eyes. But main thing is, I was hoping y'all are not going to give up because that's what I feel like, and that's what everybody, that's why nobody comes up here. Because when I first started this, they told me, they said, "You won't get anywhere."
I think you got a good somewhere.
But I did, I got the fence and the signs put up there myself before I ever come up here.
The fence, the sign, the methane, the county has taken over responsibility to assume an entire street. That gets to be pretty expensive for the long term. We've tried to deal with different traffic issues in Hamilton and here. Don't say nothing's been done.
Has that got anywhere in Hamilton yet?
Well, it's already, there've been some changes in DOT. They've got to do it because you're dealing with 116 and 27. They've made some changes. Ask them to look into it a little bit further. Yes, there are going to be some other changes.
But Harry, last, one more question for you. I'll get out y'all's there, right there. When they take off that pit out there, they were going to dig that pit.
In front, you talking about?
Between the store and them, in that flat, to catch the water and pump it back.
That was a supposition. I've never heard them say that that's what they're going to do.
Well, we know that's what they're going to do. Why did they change their mind?
I don't know.
You don't have any idea?
No, I don't. They told us that, well, they haven't really answered that directly, but they said they were going to consider doing something like that, but they have not made the decision to do it.
Well, they had made up their mind and how much it was going to cost. They had located lines. They had done a whole bunch of hours. They were fixing to dig. But when you and Martha, you went up to them, did some work with them. And after that, two days later, take thing down, everything, come on.
Some of it they were backing off on because of not feeling, as I've told you, not feeling appreciated by the community, so they felt that they were being shown. They were asked to come into this community. They've brought a lot into this community for many, many years, back when they were asked to come into the community.
You talking about?
The chicken plant was asked to come into the community. They didn't come in, gangbusters, push people away, confiscate property, do whatever bad things some corporations can do. They were asked to come to the community. There are people still here who are receiving retirements because of the chicken.
Uh-uh, here's your other point.
And they were asked, so there's some questions to look at.
I'll be here. I appreciate it.
Certainly, if we hear anything, we'll let you know.
I'll be waiting.
All right, anyone else? Bobby Harrelson?
Bobby Harrelson, 59, way short from 50 years old. I'm the only one that ever said that 10 months. Waiting to see if they can do better. They have, they've done worse. 214 was worse than 213. 213 was worse than 212. 213, it gets worse all over town. I'd give up. This may probably be the last time I'm sitting at this table and ask for anything. Because I know I'm not going to get it. I'd give up on all of you. Joe and Becky, maybe not. I've got a few questions. I can't hear you. I've got seven thousand dollars hearing aids. I still can't hear you. Did you say they would turn the methane off?
No, they have put in the equipment and all to do that, but they have permits and they have to receive them when they start.
Well, they all get ahead of permit to tell them, I didn't have to get another permit.
I'm not bothering their permit.
That's just another excuse. Christmas Eve, and then this Saturday. It got some pretty heavy air. I want to record mine that it was pretty heavy. It flushed up the road. And for seven days, I didn't smell anything. But on the eighth day, it was back again, just as bad as it was. Good Lord help us cover the hour a little bit. Send it down to Riverside to somebody else. Christmas, Christmas Day, day after. Eric, did you go out and check and see if that creek overflowed, overflowed that settlement?
No, sir, I did not.
Did anybody in the county check? Don't you think that's something that the nurse and I didn't even ought to be looking at?
We had...
Creek overflowing in ponds? I don't know. We did not, but we all know.
We had a few roads out.
We all know they had overflowed those ponds or not. Now, why can't that be a standard procedure? That if county manager or somebody go out there, it's a big rain, to see if those ponds have been overflowed? If they are. You know what you're setting down in Riverside Looms? It's not a season to be out in the river whitewater. New car can, but it would be bad to be out there with all that stuff coming out of Looms. I said, "I'd give up." I'm not going to come over here and beg for my hair up and beg somebody to do something that they ought to do this year. Most people get by with their work. And nobody, nobody stops. On the 18th day of December, that was the same night we had a Republican party to be affected with. Scott came out and picked me up. He does that every week. Every time he come over here, every time he go, he probably leave. He picked me up and by the way, he picked me up and placed me on. I push him up that border, and I'm going back in any way I can. It is a problem. Scott pulled up my car, he said, "What's going on in the parking lot?" And I said, "No, I ain't got no good." He said, "The guy lit up like a football field." He said, "We got a few minutes. Let's go back out there and see." We go back out there. He showed us, they had it lit up, put a lot of lights, had a huge tri-coal, bigger than one the county has. And they were out there digging up that little driveway, all the way up to the edge of the pavement. And I'll bet you they don't have no permit. The next morning, I got somebody riding me out there shortly before 8:00 and they were pulling concrete. The edge of the pavement, pulling that new concrete in there. You're supposed to have permits to do that, Harry. They're supposed to be inspected. We put in driveways in the county. We had to, I had to get a permit. I hadn't held it on the tree. It wasn't nothing else up out there. They just do it. On December, in November, the wife was bringing, they're bringing over the payment taxes. We were going to go get up to the caution light. And there was three sheriffs calling, having a new license, making everybody know. We got around to the post office, lying away in the back lane. The truck had come down C Street, not very good to pulling over, and tried to cut back. Didn't try that little cut-through road, either. Tried to go all the way down to the stop sign and tried to cut back. He got in the ditch. And the road was blocked about a mile high. They just had a big drive up the range. I went to the road, paid the taxes. Coming back out, and I looked up at the sheriff's office. I said, "Let me out." She took her, I said, "Let me out." I catch me around. I walked up there, and Michael's there, and he was doing his television and the music. Let y'all watch on television. I stood there and watched. He come up back, and I said, "Hi." "Did your boys, your deputies, did they take that truck?" "What truck?" He said, "I just got to work. I had to get a report." One of the deputies was standing there. He said, "Yeah." "We took it." "And we compounded the truck because it didn't have any insurance." And that's what we have to put up with, Eric. Not just two months of being closed. This thing is not going to come to a closure until they stop. We stop, to the county stop, the high mountain freshwater system starts, stops putting more water in that little triangle land, and then they can adequately dispose of it. That is the only way. We cannot depend on a good Lord flushing the commode of time it needs flushing.
Tadzor. Tadzor.
Yeah, we told you that once before. I hope I live long enough, coming here next. I hope I'm safe.
I heard. The time's up. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
All right. Next, old business, appointment to the Board of Zoning Administration for board zoning adjustments. Mr. Lauderdale?
Yes. In thinking about the appointment, I was looking at someone who was young, who was smart, interested in the community from my district. I came up with a name for someone that I thought was very good in his position. His name is Matt Wyatt. And Matt is smart. He has a degree from University of Georgia, so he qualifies him as smart. He's also an engineer, certified engineer. He has a real estate license. He's interested in this community. And so I contacted him and asked him if he would like to be involved in his position. And he said that he would. So my pleasure to nominate Matt Wyatt to fill this position on the board of zoning adjustments. And I'll make that a motion.
All right, we got a motion. Any second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify raising your hands. Post? Motion carries. Any other old business? All right, new business, have a resolution of appreciation that I would like to read. Whereas employees of Harris County reasonably go above and beyond the call of duty to serve the citizens of Harris County. And whereas over the 2015 Christmas holidays, record-breaking rainfall occurred, which resulted in the undermining of public roads and water lines. And whereas employees gave up time with their families and friends to answer the call for the safety and welfare of the citizens by making emergency repairs to infrastructure during the miserable weather conditions. And whereas the Harris County Board of Commissioners wish to express their gratitude for the exemplary efforts and personal sacrifice made by the following employees for the betterment of the county. Public works, Mike Brown, Daniel Colvin, Jeffrey Cotton, Ricky Culpepper, Norman Evans, Eugene Kite, Ricky Ponder, and Chris Weatherspoon. Waterworks, Jeff Culpepper, Alan Floyd, David Laney, Brad Milner, Nick Moy, and Meredith Williams. There were also other citizens and volunteer fire people that were out doing work and also our EM, EM8 group. Now therefore be it resolved that this resolution of appreciation be spread upon the minutes of the Board of Commissioners of Harris County, thereby making the citizens aware of the hard work and self-sacrifice of these dedicated employees. So resolved this 19th day of January 2016. Enter that as a motion for approval. Second, any discussion? All in favor, please signify raising your hands. Motion carries. We, I know we've got, Jeff is here. You got any other folks?
Well, Mike Brown would have made it, but his father did surgery apparently today, so he sends his regrets. But I will take this out and try and catch the crews first thing in the morning one day, as we predict, and make sure that they're all aware of this.
Next item of business is the pet coalition. And Catherine Genova of the Harris County Humane Society is here tonight to discuss the pet coalition, which includes Harris County Humane Society, the Harris County Animal Control, and other various agencies such as cause in Columbus. Miss Genova, if you would come up to the table and...
I would also like to introduce Drill Short. Drill Short is another representative of the pet coalition. She works for Columbus Animal Care and Control. And Donaldson was unable to attend. She's dead. So we just wanted to introduce ourselves and to give a real nod to Harris County Animal Control. I have to do this first. They have done an outstanding job in 2015. Our Harris County Animal Control, particularly addition of Anna Donaldson, the all the staff there are excellent, have reduced, have actually done live, gotten live outcomes, which is the measurement that we use for a success rate for both rescue as well as municipal shelter, is to about 7... is to about seventy-two percent for a rural, for a rural community that is outstanding. And is truly as a result of some of the most more recent work they've done. So I think you all need to give them a little pat on the back too, because they've done a great job. The Pet Coalition is a, we formed a cooperative group in partnership. It includes Harris County Animal Control, Humane Society, Harris County, Columbus Animal Care and Control, Cause Humane, and another private rescue called Animal Arc. Our goal by partnering is to reduce euthanasia as an animal, as an animal control function. And its power, takes the power of many, that will bring them together, bring us all together with the hopes of using all our resources. For instance, I know Anna Donaldson's been talking to Drill about things about licensing and stuff, and kind of comparing notes, seeing what's successful. So we really think those kind of cooperative things will really improve our animal welfare efforts here. But our first effort, we have received a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from Best Friends Animal Society out of Utah that has been gifted to the Coalition because of our progressive partnering ideas. And we are actually going to do adoptions at Petsmart in Columbus now seven days a week. Coalition will actually do them five, Monday through Friday, with the goal of addressing difficult to adopt large, large dogs, black dogs, silly-looking dogs, all the ones that are more difficult to adopt. Part of that grant is going to actually staff, a staff person there that can manage it. And each one of the agencies will provide animals one day a week down there. All of this is to reduce our euthanasia and to increase our adopted, our adopted, successful adopted homes. So we're excited, we really appreciate everything that Harris County has been, been willing to support this and want to let you know that we're here. And we think that partnering with Muskogee County, Harris, and us partnering will really make big things. Hopefully when we come here a year from now, that seventy-two percent live, live homeless rate will be ninety percent. And that is the goal sealed, that is what we try to achieve, and we know that we've been doing our job. So we do really appreciate our support.
Along those lines, in our cooperation in animals that we are adopting out, those will receive spay and neuter certificates so that they don't add to the problem when they're out in the public. And that's something that we need to continue to emphasize, is spay and neuter. I should leave that to Dr. Woods for his, his platform there. But that's one thing we need to make sure that we don't have unwanted pregnancies in our animal population.
And I think you'll probably see, once we get this particular program off the ground, we'll be, we'll be putting our heads together for other programs that will help address the issue of things like education, awareness for spay and neuter, those kind of things, that's another really good reason we've got, we can partner. Because we don't have those kind of resources here in Harris County. We'll partner with folks down in Columbus where they have more resources for offering low-cost spay and neuter and stuff. Will really, really help a lot. There's a big issue, thank you very much, you're timed.
Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate you very much.
Yeah.
The Board of Directors from the Harris County Humane Society had asked that I read a statement from them. Do you want me to do that? To the Harris County Board of Commissioners, because of a scheduling issue, we are having our first Board of Directors meeting in the evening this evening and cannot attend the Board of Commissioners meeting. On behalf of the Harris County Board of Directors, we wish for you to know that we strongly support the Animal Coalition Initiative and feel it will further continue our strong momentum coming out of two thousand fifteen and into this new year. Working together as a team with all the organizations can only give us more strength as an animal rescue and advocacy group and bring value to all concerned. We are also very pleased and appreciate the collaboration between the Harris County Humane Society and the Harris County Animal Control Team, and hope to continue to build on our positive relationship and cooperation. We hope you will support this endeavor and we thank you for this opportunity to discuss these plans with you at this meeting. Thank you for your service to our county.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Well, I think it's certainly a big step for our area, not just Harris County. But otherwise too, and I do appreciate that, I think it's great, thank you. Thank you for being here. All right, the next, next item is first reading of the application of Butts Mill Farm for special facility alcohol license for three locations, Carriage House, the Covered Bridge, and the Hoedown Barn at twenty-two eighty Butts Mill Road, Pine Mountain. Sheriff's Office has, sees no reason not to approve it. Community Development has said it is okay for approval and the Health Department has no issues with it, not applicable. So this is their application submitted to, to this Board of Commissioners for approval. This is the first reading. All three locations are, they're, are well outside of any distance restrictions. We will have the second reading in our next meeting. At this point in time, are there any citizens present who wish to speak in, in support of this application? Any in support? Are there any citizens here that wish to speak in opposition? Any in opposition?
Chairman, Lisa White, she's the daughter of the applicant, she's here to speak on behalf. If there's any questions for Butts Mill Farm.
If you would like to come up and say something, please be free, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I didn't look like a John Cavill, did I?
No, you didn't.
Um, I just wanted to correct one thing. With dealing with a few of the event facilities that happen to be in Truitt County, the Covered Bridge is actually in Truitt County. So we have to, we have to correct the fact that the Hoedown Barn and the Carriage Room are the only two. And in fact, today I just received a phone call from Truitt County that we were approved for the same thing there, so...
Okay.
So does the county line come back south?
It's, it's very confusing.
Just annex it all to Harris County.
I mean, we could, we could do it for both.
The joint that we have, it was done by someone from the previous owners, clearly shows a covered bridge in Harris County.
Well, they, they claim it, and certainly, you know, we could do it through Harris County as well. I just wanted to clarify that, you know, in case there was any confusion.
It's difficult for me, having lived on the county line my whole life, for most of it. It's difficult for me to believe that that is not in Harris County.
Okay.
It's just, it's south of everything else, and otherwise, the rest of it's in Truitt County too.
Right. Well...
Does someone want to come through?
Correct, there's a, there's a small bridge to the pub-pub course. But I, I think the reason the confusion lies is because the Grissom House is in a close proximity to that covered bridge.
Here, what is?
Yeah, and I've seen all these guys.
This is what the Grissom is.
Yes.
And there's a bridge somewhere along here? But this is the only one shown, is a covered bridge, that's why they...
It's probably this is the porch, yes.
Yes.
And then...
There's a stone, there's a stone right there.
Right. But the covered bridge should be somewhere over here.
See, this is the county line.
Right.
We can, we can get that straight with Truitt County, alcohol trace and all, double check your...
But this one is, is to leave it on, doesn't take it off.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, if you get approval both counties, it's...
Right, no, exactly, I just wanted to be clear that, you know...
Yeah, and we, as long as we get this agreement straight, our next reading. All right.
That was it.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate you being here. We will certainly get that resolved.
Okay, I'll see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the financial statement for November two thousand fifteen, which gives us five months of our fiscal year. Our financial officer, Paul Glick, is here to answer any questions we might have. And I will open the floor to any questions and any commissioners might have at this point in time. Otherwise, I'll enter a motion.
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Glick, the ninety-one thousand nine seventy, the off-architecture count for the airport, what's that worth?
Most of that is fuel.
This one?
Fuel.
Okay.
We get, we charge it out, it will be charged out, it's, it's kind of complicated, but it will go away immensely there.
Okay, and then the last entry on that thing, it looks like a transfer to PIA. It's, it's for the community center debt, I think I know what that is, but I'd like to...
What happens is that the community center debt really is debt of the Public Improvement Authority. So what we have to do is we have to transfer money out of it. Right now, we're transferring money out of the general fund. Originally, there was some money set aside and put in the general fund to cover that, at least to cover a certain amount of it. And so what we have to do is we have to transfer it to the PIA, and the PIA has to make the payment to the...
Okay, that's what I thought it was, but I won't, so thanks for asking.
All right, any other questions or comments for commissioners? Then I do have a motion. Motion to approve, I have a second.
I'll say.
Second, any other discussion? All in favor, simply raise your hands. Motion carries. Any other new business? Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Jack made field with the, my pine engineer here, he's our airport consultant. Governor doesn't know if you're necessarily having anything to ask him, but I thought Paul was here, if you wanted to pick his brain.
Well, it's a good opportunity for him to bring everybody up to date, citizens up to date, what's going on at the airport. Jack, if you would, please.
Glad to. Commissioners, appreciate this, this time. Excuse me, I felt a little cold this past week and I'm trying to fight it, so keep a brief ear. As y'all know, we've got three projects going on at the airport simultaneously. One is the taxiway project, another two are associated with the T-hangers, T-hanger construction, the buildings themselves and the pavement. T-hang, the taxiway project, we're approximately thirty-five percent complete at this point. And by the end of this month, we should have asphalt, and we'll, stone, and then asphalt. And that'll take us to approximately about sixty-five, seventy percent complete on the project. And then following that with the electrical. So we anticipate the taxiway project to be completed, roughly completed. We were estimating early to mid, mid-March to be able to have activity on the, on the pavement itself, on the taxiway. Remaining items are the landscape, just doing the punch list. So we're excited about finally getting that up, up, up and going. You know, we've had a tremendous amount of rain, and so that's really kind of impacted our overall schedule. The taxiway, I mean, excuse me, the hanger projects, we have the T-hanger, Jumbo T-hanger was completed. I got certificate of occupancy December twenty-eighth. So we have that completed, we're working on the punch list. And we have two other corporate hangers, hundred-by-a-hundred hangers. The set, the first corporate hanger will be completed in about a week. We're approximately ninety-five percent complete at this point. So we will have the ready-to-do power turnover hopefully in the next day or two. Barring, barring, I'm not gonna say if the rain, if I do get caught. And then third hang, the, the second corporate hanger, the third hanger will completely be completed February twenty-fourth. We're well ahead of schedule on that, that should be probably the first or second week of February that that's completed. Paving will start, putting the stone down for paving for the apron area, for the apron area associated with the hangers. We were supposed to start on Friday, paving, with the weather possibly coming in with rain, probably move that up over till next week, so... So I don't know if you've been out to the airport, I know some of the Michigan authority members were out this past week. And this changed drastically since y'all were out there, so it's just one of these, every day is a big, big improvement out. So I'd love for y'all to come out and do, love to show you around. Any questions you may have?
Was the Jumbo T-hanger, was ready for occupancy over twenty-eight?
Right, we had the certificate of occupancy, yes ma'am. The site contractor did not have the paving on the west side, we have two sides with the hanger. So we were able to access the east side on the existing pavement side. And now we're working on getting the pavement for the west side.
And we do have five.
We do, yeah.
All right, good, thank you, Jack, we're just, Jack's been spending, he's, he's been spending a lot of time in Harris County. He's on the other side of the road.
He's close to it, Charlie Packers?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, 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 wait.
No, they're doing a good job, Paul's there, a lot going on. All right, anything, any other new business? Okay, next on the agenda, Greg, turn it over to you, talk about the ninety-nine and two thousand four splosts.
Yes, sir. We are, rather than work on what was originally projected as far as total project income or splosh income, that's ship of sales, we know we've got all we're gonna get. So, but I went back and looked at it, so what is, what are the actual cash balances available to do projects? And looked at what was outstanding. And in the ninety-nine splosts, we have that sixty-three thousand and change, or whatever it is, for Pine Mountain. We have two hundred thirty-five thousand available. When you back out the money, the Pine Mountain is, is still out there, that leaves a hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and, five hundred fifty-seven dollars. And I would suggest going ahead and allowing us to spend a hundred percent of that on roads. We can use it on Washington Road, get that money spent out. And then we need to address Pine Mountain in some way or fashion and say, "You've got the money, so you're out there. Please give us a plan on how you're gonna spend it, when you're gonna spend it, and that will take care of the ninety-nine." But the two thousand four splosts has a little more money in it, it has three hundred and one thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars. It may actually have a bit more. The balance that's out there for fire EMS is forty-eight thousand, twenty-nine dollars. I say keep them whole, because they can always find some more money. I have one suggestion that you may want to discuss tonight, and I'll bring that up in a minute. Parks, I had John submit me a list of projects that are outstanding for Bay Park, which I've included. It's about a hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred dollars, I believe. I suggest going ahead and allocating the hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars for that and the balance of any funds, which should be about sixty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-two, then allocating to roads. Go ahead and get these funds spent out, then we can start dealing with the two thousand nine splosts, or other categories we may have available of those. But I want staff to have definitive guidance so that we can go ahead and get the job done, get these funds expended where they need to be expended, and get this one off the books.
First, of the ninety-nine, for the road funding, should that figure be sixty-three, four, forty-five?
No, I did it different. It confused Nancy, the, the, no, the sixty-three thousand is what Pine Mountain has not spent out there.
So it means...
Yeah, that one seventy-one, five, five, seven is the balance after that.
Oh, yeah, I couldn't tell which is which.
So it's, yeah, it's like, it was too late after it was already printed in the house, so...
Okay, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
This may be nitpicky, but two hundred and sixty dollars is two hundred and sixty dollars.
And that is two hundred and sixty.
Yeah, a balance available of two thirty-five thousand, and then the sheet which broke out in nineteen ninety-nine, it's two thirty-five, two sixty.
Oh, yes, you're right.
So we actually have an extra two hundred and sixty dollars?
Which we will put to roads.
Okay.
If that's okay with you.
That's fine with me.
Basically, on that one, all I want to say is, give us the balance for the roads, except what Pine Mountain has, and tell me what to do with Pine Mountain. That's a pretty easy one.
I talked to the mayor of Pine Mountain, Jim Frot. He talked to you previously. They are in final stages of getting the prices down to redo the restrooms, ball fields. They are in final stages of getting the prices down to redo the restrooms on Ballfields. And the rest of the time, and Kenny's agreed to help them with redoing, they talked to Jeremy, I'm sorry, I'm going to call back and ask you, Jeremy, Paul.
I think they talked to Jamie.
What?
Jamie.
Jamie, okay. And that rest of the time is, you know, will be, it'll be done when Harris County has time to do it. Harris County agreed to help them with the...
I didn't realize we were going to do the whole project for them, I thought we were just planning it. We'll have that discussion, but still, we got sixty-three thousand dollars to spend, we'll figure out how that's going to happen. But I want to be able to go ahead and spend the rest of the money and get it done.
Yeah, that isn't going to include all of it, but the rest of it, they have various small projects involving their recreation that they're going to spend.
Has there been any resolution regarding the confusion about paving, what's the latest on that?
They paid us what they had allocated.
Can any portion of this, I don't know how they said in seven ninety-nine?
I would like to, but they could, they could just forego that money and allow us to put it in roads and pile it away, but I don't think that's going to happen.
We'll have to address it at some point, the result. A joint was understanding, so.
It was, I mean, who did, who did you own count it by? And we used, our specs got used for their streets, instead of their specs getting used, so.
Speaking of cars, the two thousand four splosts, you mentioned paint. This all allocated paint, rather than...
That was mentioned, yes, that was all paint, that's why I made the, that's why I had John make up the list of everything that's supposed to be done.
Do you know what, give us exactly what those projects are?
Yes, sir, it was included in your package, under this, under recreation, there you go. And it's kind of also kind of an update of everything they're doing and where they're at, so you have a good idea.
Let's take care of paint, we still have some other projects in our...
This is supposed, I asked John to give me everything that needed to be done.
Paint should be fully up to speed, these ones.
Yes, sir, and I gave him a little, little extra Lee way in there, eight-hundred dollars.
We'll spend that too, just like being this two-sixty.
That's true.
Alright, we, this is really all, are you looking for us to have a vote on this tonight, or is it...
Yes.
Just going to ratify what you're doing?
Well, that, either way, but I was, I wanted so that staff knows what we're talking about. Now, I did, I did send you out some information earlier, and we have a couple of fire chiefs here, and if they want to chime in, it might be helpful. The Hittera radios that were supposed to be given, the mobile repeaters, didn't come to fruition. Hittera did not kick them out. They are being replaced by what's called a Supera, Supera, mobile radio gateway repeater. Problem is, those aren't compatible portable radios. So, Andy, either one, Ricky, but both of y'all represent cities, I don't know if that makes any difference, but... That means that those radios can't talk to, to hand the portables now. The question is, how many portables do you need? If that's just a command and control function, or that you're, what I'm suggesting is potentially, well, let me pass this out before I start.
Is the action splosts up?
Well, I need to, I need to have this discussion tonight, because this, this trade-in offer is fixing to go away. And we can use the fire department's sploß funds to do this, if this works out, but we need to make sure we're...
Quick, quick, as I understand, you're talking about the gateway repeater.
Right, but having the, the portables that are compatible with that.
As I, as I understand from Dean, the Hittera radios that we have will not work with those gateway repeaters. I mean, that's support around, I don't know, I think Hamilton and us are both still using Hitteras, because we always had the funding to swap all those radios in. Basically, I think it used to be one per repeater.
That's my question, and that's why I was looking at potentially, do we need one per station or two per station?
I think it's only one gateway repeater per department, I guess, so it's one.
Well, let me back up, per department or per station? Because there's a difference, because if Antioch, if, if they roll one station and don't roll the others, and they have a gateway repeater on one, and they don't have a Supera, then they're up the creek.
I can answer for them, I can answer for us, we can just be going.
But I'm thinking we need one per station as a...
I was thinking per, or per department, that was my understanding.
Is he providing the gateway, maybe I'm misunderstanding, is he paying, providing gateway repeaters to per department? Or per station?
That was what we were told, was, yes, one per department.
Okay, that makes it a little bit different. But rather than the departments necessarily funding these, how many of y'all have unused Hitteras that you haven't issued out yet?
I've got maybe two.
Okay, but, okay, there's, there's, the reason I'm bringing this up now is because we have a deal where you can take those unused radios, get a seven-hundred dollar credit, and get one of the portables that's compatible with this mobile gateway. And what the mobile gateway, they basically does is, if you're in a weak area and you cannot communicate with portables back to nine-one-one, or... This, this basically becomes kind of a mini, mini radio tower, for lack of a better thing. It will pick up that signal from your portable and allow you to talk back to nine-one-one, am I getting that right?
That's our understanding, I think the sheriff's office already has one.
Yeah, they did, they do. So the question is, do we want to set aside a certain amount of funding? Number one, number, do you want to do the amount suggestion for the fire departments? That's all you can go, because that's what was the allocation of splosts. Do you want to set aside some of that to help defray the costs of everyone, at least every department getting one of the radios? And I need to do that very quickly, because this deal actually already ran out, but Dean got them to extend the offer. Instead of having to pay the twelve-hundred-and-fifty full price.
Is this going to solve the problems? It just seems like, I've looked at some minutes and years, it seems like...
It's not going to solve, this is, this will solve one problem. And that is having the capability of, when you're in a weak situation, having, being able to get your communication back to nine-one-one, no matter what. But that's essentially the big problem that's been solved. If you, if everybody was on the radio, then I believe you could use it as basically a mobile command post and have all the radios on it. But that's, given the situation we have with Hitteras, and the expense of trying to do that, it's not as, you know, the only time that would perhaps be applicable, and Nancy, you're trying to get all this... But would be in a mass casualty situation, perhaps, which then you're going to have the sheriff's department on scene with their mobile repeaters. So, you know, you only really need one there, and they will have capability. If you get a situation like that, you'll have multiple posts that should have the capability.
If we do this, what problems are still going to be remaining with firefighters?
Well, I'll let the firefighters address that, but one, one problem is right now is towers.
But West Point's...
West Point has been addressed, part of that. Then is the power of the transmitters themselves, and we are going to bump that up fifty percent.
Why wasn't it, why isn't it already strong enough? What's, I mean, it just seems there's been a lot of money spent, and we're just...
We're not spending any money on this upgrade, it's not coming out of our pocket.
I thought it's going to be just thirty-two thousand, yeah.
For the, for the tower, for the straight upgrade, no, that's being, that's being funded entirely out of, out of the providers' power.
What do we need to do to get, to get things really right?
Exactly. I would love to have, I really wish we'd had Dean here tonight.
Do we want to have him at our retreat?
To answer some questions, because I'll give you an example. Antioch over the weekend on Friday, Friday morning about two-thirty, they had a serious problem with their radios. Again, Sunday afternoon, they had a serious problem with their radios. And on Sunday afternoon, at the location, they were at Mulberry Creek School.
That's one, yeah, that's one, fire chief, I was told it was taller.
They did go in, they...
Their chief didn't think about it, no.
Well, I don't know about that. But they were at Mulberry Creek School, and, you know, we keep, we're told that once we beef up these towers or do whatever, the street's going to be better. There's a tower right behind Mulberry Creek School.
That was not the problem, I don't think, it sounded to me like they were on the wrong channel.
I have, I have a radio, I listened to the entire phone, they were not on the wrong channel.
And both you shouldn't have been able to listen, I don't think, they should have been on the copper, like, after...
You're talking about the DMO channel?
Yeah. Help me out, guys.
We have, in our report, we have an SOP, you're inside the building, you go to the DMO, that's radio with radio, and you would not be able to hear the model.
Well, this was outside, and I heard the firemen could not communicate with, with the apparatus, the truck that was on its way. He had no idea if there was a truck on the way, he could not hear anything, and could not communicate with the truck. He had to go, he had to communicate with nine-one-one for them to tell him that there was a truck on the way. He didn't know if he had any backup on the way. And I heard the whole phone, right in my kitchen.
Okay, then let me suggest, at our retreat, we invite Mr. Yen?
What I don't want to do is, I don't want to throw some good money at the bad. I don't want to spend any more money and possibly, I want to know that this is going to work, and this is going to help the firemen. That's what I want to know. We have spent how much money on radios in the last year and a half? A lot of money, and there are still issues.
Yeah, well, I'm, I mean, I, I ran this up the flagpole because of the, the short duration availability.
When does, when does that expire?
We've got less than a month. But if we got one for each department, that would be ten, so that'd be fifty-five-hundred dollars. So if y'all feel comfortable in allocating one compatible portable out of this, or you can just give the money to the fire departments and let them do their own thing. By way, you know, of course, I'm going to run this by the chiefs, but I wanted to get some guidance from y'all before we went out there.
Does the sheriff's department avoid doing this, same thing?
Big part?
How does the sheriff's department avoid doing the same thing?
Why aren't they in the same situation as the fire departments?
Because they already have it.
They already have it, why don't we have it, why don't we have it?
They have a mobile repeater on every, on every...
They already have it, and EMS has it too, don't they, no?
I think so, no.
I think they do, I think EMS and Sheriff's.
So repeater within every bill, is that the way they're, they're doing it?
That's my understanding.
And they have compatible radios as well.
Right, that's my understanding.
Why have we not gone that same route?
Because the, you're talking, sheriff's thirty-eight radios, EMS, another dozen. So you're talking less than sixty radios, and for the volunteer fire departments, how many do we have, hundreds?
I was going to say that probably they have fifteen or twenty each, with the exception of Antioch.
The number of people? There's a hundred-and-forty-five on the roster, last time I got the lists.
Antioch has the most radios, but I would say fifteen to twenty for all the other...
Well, and part of the problem is, we were promised, or Dean was promised by Hittera, that they would have the mobile repeaters out already, which are compatible with the radios that were given to the fire departments. And Hittera did not come through with the radio. That's one reason we're jammed up in that situation. Which I, you know, you can put a lot of things on Dean, but you can't come down on him, I don't think. And I just brought this up tonight, just because it was a pressing issue. Right now, we really just, we really need just to get some direction on if this, if this spending plan is okay with you, so staff knows how to allocate those funds. And so, I, because otherwise, I want to get a handle on what I have, especially for roads, so that we get done with Washington, and know what else roads I can bring to y'all, go ahead and go forward with.
Greg, I think, I suppose both Becky and Martha, right, why should we spend any more money till we know it's going to work? And I mean, I, we're tentatively approve it, but, but we need to know that it's going to work.
Well, my big thing is, I just don't want the fire departments to go out there and have a, a radio that they can't communicate with at all. That's why I would suggest to go ahead and allocate ten radios out of the fund.
But do we know they're going to work?
Yeah, they'll work, they will work with the mobile repeater and that radio. The radios they have will not. So, he's given them the, the mobile repeater, but has he given y'all a, a radio to go with that as well? That's what I thought.
Extra dollars.
That's why I think we should front it. If, if you're, just as a simple thing to do, not ask them to put out the money.
Oh, I don't think we should ask the fire departments to do that.
And that's, that's the point, it's just, I think that's, even if we just do one, and then allocate the rest of the funds. How do you see that?
How quickly would that be?
I think he has them in inventory now.
You don't know all the history, do you?
Are you, are you, are you going to put that in the paper? What's it over, was...
I just, I just, as much money as we spend on radios, I just hate to approve another expenditure, and we don't know. That's why I said I wish we had had Dean here tonight, so that he could answer some questions.
I just, I just didn't want, I'm not wanting to leave the pie dry, is my, is my only point.
Could you talk to Dean and get a guarantee out of him that if they don't work? Turn those back in and get our money back?
I'm willing to go out there, I mean, pretend, I mean, what we should ask for is, I don't know, does West Point need one? Are they in the...
They're not, I don't know, West Point's, I can't answer that, I don't know, that's a problem.
Okay, how do they, oh, nobody ever does a joint spot like that?
Northwest Terrace School.
Yeah, I didn't have a whole lot of time to research this, it's something that came up last minute, and I wanted to bring it to y'all, just so you knew it was out there.
I'm not in favor of, of doing anything, we get some more answers from Dean on this.
And I'm fine with that, I just wanted to, I mean, I have no pride and ownership on this one, this is...
See, if Dean will give you that agreement, then that's fine, we'll go ahead and do it, if not, it sounds like we're waiting.
Seems that if Hittera's the one who did not come through as promised, that this trade-in offer should be extended. Harris County, until we can research and find out.
Well, he's already, I mean, these are two-year-old radios, he's already gotten them to extend it once, just on this, that's why I felt...
Yeah, yeah, we didn't know about it until now, so...
And I have no problem just addressing that, it's a separate issue, separate department.
Yes, I do want the guidance, and so that we have some, especially when fire EMS, or fire, because this is not, this is just, well, let me say this, this is just going to be for fire. Because EMS already spent their money out of it, so this will be exclusively for fire out of the two thousand four. But you guys and the fire departments need some definitive idea what they have to spend, that's why I'm bringing it forward. So we can go ahead and address the first part, the ninety-nine, two thousand four splosts, as far as the radios, I guess that's the only, that's the condition that they're giving to you. So if they, if they don't work, they take them back, give us their money back, otherwise, anything else we have to, no, we get insurance. Otherwise, anything else we have, no, do we get insurance? All right, we need a motion as far as the two, nine, just the first part of this, the ninety-nine and two thousand four splosts, flows out.
I need a motion.
I have that motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any other discussion?
Would you please go over exactly what you want to...
Yes, all along. All right, what we're voting on is just, is basically, is essentially the first, that page that is, the second page in, that starts off nineteen ninety-nine splosh funds.
Uh, and let me restate that first part. You're, you're allocating out of ninety-nine, the sixty-three thousand and change, this, due to Pine Mountain, with the balance of funding going to road funding at a hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred fifty-seven dollars plus eight hundred and seventeen, plus the amount that Tishery Lightston corrected me on. And then for the two thousand four, um, the fund that, based on available funding, um, the forty-eight thousand, twenty-nine would go to fire EMS, 'cause that's what they had remaining. A hundred and ninety-two thousand, based on the projection by the recreation department that's needed finished paint. And then basically sixty-one thousand, five hundred eighty-two, or whatever's left, go to roads.
Didn't you say that forty-eight go twenty-nine is strictly fire now?
Yeah.
Yes, I...
But that's how it's allocated in splosh, is that why I, but I just wanna make it clear that it's going to fire. EMS spent their...
So the vote is on the, on those, and that kind of expenditure, uh, paint park expenditure, the recreation department there is on the next page back. It shows a hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred, so there's eight hundred dollars extra going with them on the other end. And that's all we're voting on, and that will allow us to close out the ninety-nine splosh and the two thousand four splosh.
I'll make that my comment.
All right, well, we got a motion in a second, so, uh, any other discussion on that? All in favor of that motion, say goodbye, raise your hand. Hallelujah. All right, I know, I know Mr. Blick would be happy to close those out too. All right, uh, and the radio station, you'll just keep us posted.
Yeah.
Greg, on your, so, all right, anything else, Greg?
Um, we need to talk, talk the acquisition.
Okay?
In executive session?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd also like to speak to personnel there, executive session.
First, we need, yeah, litigation.
All right. Mr. Taylor?
I have nothing, except we need to do the executive session, real property for litigation briefly, and then personnel.
All right, uh, I will make that motion for executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion second, all in favor, see if I made it here. Motion carries. We'll adjourn to executive session.